Florida County Commissioners, December 3rd, 2019. We've got a couple really positive things on our agenda today. The first of which is a presentation from 4C for Children. Vanessa Freitag is here. Vanessa was here, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago and wanted to speak for a couple of minutes about 4C. I'm like, wait a minute, it's going to take more than a couple of minutes to talk about 4C and all the good work. So anyway, thank you for coming back and being willing to spend a little more time with us.
Absolutely, and thank you for inviting me. Commissioners, good to see you, and I know you have both had strong support for early childhood education and also for the parents that are served. My purpose today is to do a couple of things. One is to provide, yes, some really positive news about how childcare and the quality of it is improving in Hamilton County. Some of it, though, is to also put in context the next chapter of what's going to happen because some of that will affect, in particular, the hardworking families in our community. So I wanted to be sure that you knew and were prepared for that. First couple of slides I'm going to go through fairly quickly, just want to make sure that you know the work of 4C and what our role is. So I'm sure you can't, I don't think you can live in this town and not have heard that early childhood is a critical time for children. This is when brain development happens. And as you may know, in the state of Ohio, we have a rating system for the quality of that care. That quality certainly in part means health and safety, but it also means educational quality. And because of the brain formation, it's critical that young children are in environments that are actually helping children develop all the things they need to be kindergarten-ready. So the connection between that early brain development and the work that 4C does, we are the agency designated by the state of Ohio in this region to work with childcare programs on the quality of what they provide to children. So very briefly, we are called a Childcare Resource and Referral, CCRNR. There is one selected per region. This region includes multiple counties, although Hamilton County being the largest. And we're actually, we also have this similar responsibility a little bit up north in the Montgomery County area, too. And our work is certainly assisting childcare programs with the quality of what they provide to children, also connecting families. And when I'm saying families, I'm really primarily talking about families who qualify for publicly funded childcare. So it is our low-income working families. We connect, help them connect to childcare. If you are a low-income working family, maybe you rely on the bus, you live here, your job's there, you have a four-year-old and you have an infant. That's a really hard equation to put together when it comes to making sure that you can find the right childcare, especially if your shift maybe starts a little bit early or goes a little late. We also work in the community to make sure that our community understands what quality means when we talk about the importance of quality in early childhood. So the big part of what I'm sharing with you today is, in the context of this state law that you may be aware of, that the state decided a number of years ago, rightly so, that every child should be in a quality educational setting, and in particular, families that are hardworking, low-income families should in particular have access to that. And a lot of community childcare programs are not, a lot of community childcare programs have not yet had the opportunity to work on their quality of education. In the state of Ohio, you only need a high school degree or a GED to be a childcare provider. So many of them had not received further education. What happens, June 30th of next year, if the childcare program has not achieved at least the first rating level, there are five of them, they will no longer be allowed to serve families who receive public funding for their childcare. And as you'll see towards the end, there's no extra seats. And so there aren't even enough seats really right now. So making sure that every program reached quality was critical. And there's a second part of the law, just so you know, a second law that says also by 2025, center-based programs have to reach high quality. So that's three, four, five stars. And that takes actually quite a few years to achieve that. We believe, it hasn't been formally stated by the state, but we believe they will probably add family childcare into that mix after July 1st of next year passes. It wouldn't make sense otherwise because their initial statement is, "All children should be in a high-quality setting." So we do think that's coming down the road. Just quickly, because of where we are, the fact that preschool promise is part of the Hamilton County footprint, I want to be sure you also are aware of, you know, what is the need that community childcare fills? So although we have, you know, great work happening with the preschool promise, and we do the majority of the quality of the childcare work, preschool itself definitely does not fully serve the needs of these families. You've got infants, toddlers, you've got different hours, preschool promise only covers six hours of the day, you know, that kind of thing. So I want to be sure, I always want to be sure every room I'm in, that we understand that the success of preschool promise is important, but that success is not equal to our entire community childcare need being fulfilled at a quality level. We need, we need both, actually. So, the good news that I wanted to make sure I shared today, there is a lot of work that's been happening, particularly in Hamilton County. And I have to say, Hamilton County Job and Family Services, the team that works on childcare, has been, had an integral part of this. The success we've had in this county actually is, exceeds the success in almost any other county that you could put your finger on in the state of Ohio over the last year. And you can see, a year ago, just one year ago, only about one in four programs in the county had even reached an initial rating, you know, one or more stars of rating. We're now sitting at 75%. We've tripled the number. And that is, you know, pretty astounding when you look at the hundreds of childcare programs that had to get rated to go from 25% to 75%. And to look at it a little differently, this slide would have been, you know, a year ago, kind of inverted, you would have had 75% would be in that light green color. There are a few in that one to two-star range and, you know, just 15% or so in the high-quality range. So although we have more work to do to get everybody up to high-quality, there has been just a wholesale shift in our childcare supply in Hamilton County. And it means that all of those seats not only will be saved in terms of any families that are using them now, those, they can continue to use those seats, but also, all those children are getting an even better educational experience. So ultimately, we won't feel it today, but we'll feel the ripple effect over the next five to 10 years of children being better prepared for kindergarten. And just to make it a little closer for you, you know, we're talking about children, we often talk about the childcare providers, but who are the children? In Hamilton County, roughly, you know, almost 16,000 children, and so, you know, that's 12-ish thousand families, receive help to pay for childcare. Of those programs that are not rated, what that means is there's still 2,500 children at risk. And that last climb to June 30th of next year is, is very important so that no one's left behind. And then I put the family numbers in, and then the other thing I would share with you is that this has an effect on our employers. These are working families, and without a place for their child to go, they are not likely to be able to continue their work. So the good news also is that we've got a lot more, a lot more children than ever before that are in quality-rated programs, more are in highly-rated. I would share, too, this relationship that certainly the Hamilton County Job and Family Services team has been part of, has been huge. We've gone through massive innovations at 4C. We created a cohort method to work with more programs at the same time rather than one-on-one. And, you know, all of that has been in part fueled by the team at Hamilton County Job and Family Services because they are actively out in these programs, you know, assessing, making sure that they're meeting their health and safety standards, licensing. Also, there was a change at the state, so the family childcare, those actual ratings are also now done at the county level. So that relationship that that team has here with childcare providers really helped motivate more childcare providers to get involved with getting their quality rating. We really just couldn't have done it without this partnership together to encourage programs and support programs to go and get their rating. Because it is voluntary, when you really come down to it, it's a voluntary decision. And then the last slide, and I want to make sure I leave time for any questions, is to really know that there are some things to be a little bit concerned about. This last set of programs that's not rated, many of them are going to be the most challenging. Many of them, for example, might have been grandfathered in and don't have a GED or high school degree. They were grandfathered in, in licensing, but they are not grandfathered in to quality. So that's a much bigger journey. We also have a lot of amazing women, it's almost all women, who started to take care of children typically in their neighborhoods. This tends to be family childcare, licensed childcare. And they're in their 60s, even 70s. And many of them have said, you know, "When that, when that date comes next year, that's when I'm really, I'm going to step away." And there really isn't, for the most part, anyone stepping into their shoes. So we are concerned that there will be more outages that are going to happen, even if all that can get rated do get rated. Infant care is already a year-plus wait in many areas or just impossible to find. And it's going to get worse because those family childcare programs are the ones that often have the, especially for anyone who has sort of off-shift hours, that's where those children tend to go. Preschool Promise, again, doing good work, we're certainly working with them. But they only, actually only about one in four programs that could get help from the preschool promise are involved in the preschool promise. That's voluntary. So some choose not to. And then when you go outside of that footprint to the rest of Hamilton County, there's just, there is no other additional funding. So some of the things that, that have been funded by preschool promise, for example, like paying for the evaluation books that a program would have to pay for themselves, that's not even a possibility outside that. So all in all, huge progress has been made, I mean, the partnership has been amazing. But I do want to be sure that everyone understands that we have some things that we have to keep an eye on as a county. We have to make sure that we get to the high quality, obviously. I'd say state advocacy is going to be important now and in the future. There really wasn't an increase in the support for this work in the budget. This levy obviously will come about. And then, understanding the risk of our employers in this, so employers who have families that are getting help, those, you know, those families, even if they aren't receiving funding from the state, if their child is in a program that, you know, 30 or 40 or in some cases 50% of that funding is from the state, there will be a question if they lose that contract, the program loses the contract because they don't make quality, the odds that that program could stay open are pretty slim if that much of your funding comes from state-funded children. So that's kind of the big picture, sort of good news. I really didn't think I'd be standing here today telling you that 75% would be rated. I thought we'd be at about 50 because it was such a big hill to climb. But the partnership with the Job and Family Services team has made a huge dent in making this possible.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I do have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So can you help us understand the star rating system? So when you talk about getting to the one-star rating?
Right.
What does that look like? And I know that, like, there are these two tranches of money. One is to go to the family and to make sure that child is in a quality program. But the other tranche, and I know it's much smaller, is to help these providers get up to at least a star. So what is a star? What does that mean?
So many of these childcare providers, you've got sort of two buckets. You've got nonprofit, which they, they are part of this mix. You'd think of like CAAs programs, the YMCA's programs, and then you've got privately-owned businesses. Both have access to the quality improvement dollars. So a one-star really means that you are starting to learn about the educational components that you could provide in your classroom or in your home. So for example, many, if you have a GED or a high school degree, you don't really know what a curriculum is, let alone what is an infant curriculum, because there's infant curriculums, toddler curriculums, preschool curriculums. So I would say you're just getting the, the basic pieces in place to understand that, now what do I have to learn to actually implement it into my program? Two stars, you get further into that, and that's when you, for example, choose a curriculum. And so the process of choosing a curriculum really helps you start to investigate, what does quality mean when it's delivered in the classroom? Three stars, the reason why three, four, and five stars are considered high-quality is because that is when educational curriculum is implemented. Things like doing child assessments, every child's need needs to be assessed, and then as a teacher, you're responding, just as you would in K through 12, to what each child's need is. So the first two stages really are preliminary, but they put programs on the path to then achieve high quality. And what we're seeing in the programs that have reached one star is it lights their fire to keep going, which is great. And many of these are, again, they're mostly women who have been out of school for a very long decades, in some cases. So part of it is building their ability to, to learn about early childhood education. So it is, that's why it's a tiered system. You really can't bring people into a three, four, five-star setting if they've never had any exposure at all to early childhood education principles.
Thank you. I'm just going to have one more question. I'll turn it over. So, and thank you for doing the training to help these providers get to the one, two, and then eventually more stars. Because without an organization like yours, I think they wouldn't know how to or wouldn't have the capacity to get to those star ratings. So, and I want to drill down just very quickly then on the impact, especially to the smaller providers, the neighborhood providers. I mean, we've, you know, been on the doors and knocked on people's, yeah, and they're in the daycare providers.
Right.
And so is it, is it fair to say that they, the, the families that are utilizing, in many cases, those local, you know, neighborhood-by-neighborhood providers are getting this assistance for preschool or childcare? And so that's the impact, if you've got a provider that doesn't have the one star, then they can no longer use those dollars at that facility. They, they either have to look for a different place or the provider has to get the star. Is that kind of the dynamic here?
Yeah, that's it. The contract gets pulled, the state will not allow the provider to serve families that have, that have publicly-funded childcare. And the problem is, there is no one two doors down or two blocks down that, that would have openings and that they could just move their children there. So that's part of what we're seeing. You know, sometimes the question gets asked, why don't parents who have access to publicly-funded childcare, why don't they all pull those dollars down and use them? More often than not, the answer is, there is no one geographically within their realm, within their journey, or there's no spots available for the, the age of child that they have, or they have an early or a late shift, which is an even smaller group of childcare providers. So our, we don't think of childcare often as an economic development infrastructure piece, but there's no question that it is.
Thank you. Were there comments and questions?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. You answered a couple while you were speaking.
Sure.
And I know those ratings, those ones and twos are oftentimes providers who thought they could babysit children, as long as they kept them safe and they made it through the day, that's all they had to do. So I'm just really happy about the raising the bar on the, on the ratings. I looked at your results of the innovation quality rating, and it went up to 75%. And I was just wondering, what variables did you use to raise that data, for, for the data to go up? Not all of them, just tell me a few. What did you consider?
Yeah, there are a couple of, sure, there are a couple of key innovations. The biggest one was that cohort method that I mentioned. So up until two years ago, not just here in our region, but across the state, this work was done one by one by one. We looked at that problem and said, there's no way that we can help all these programs get to where they need to go. So we did a lot of talking with providers, testing things with them, and we created a group coaching method that allows them to move more quickly.
So testing things with them, for example, what things did you test with them?
So part of what we tested was, we tested just the cohort method itself. You know, do you lose anything when you move from individual work with, with someone to group work? And what we found was, not only did you not lose any efficacy in the, in the coaching, but the providers, which was fantastic, they really learned from each other. This is a very isolating arena. As you said, you've knocked on those doors, and you know, they're caring for children eight, 10, and it's not uncommon for family childcare to have two shifts, 16-plus hours a day. So they never had the opportunity to talk with other folks that do what they do and learn from them.
Great, great.
That was the biggest piece.
Right. Two other comments as it relates to salaries, for anyone who may be interested because of the deficit that exists with childcare. If you, not tell me now, but if you have a printout that says what you could possibly earn working with children in your home or things like that.
Yeah, well, I can tell you pretty quickly. I mean, it's, it's nine or $10 an hour. I mean, and that's connected to the state's reimbursement rate. Although it gets better as you move up the quality ladder, and what we are seeing is that higher-quality programs might, might get up to $12, $13, $14 an hour.
Okay. And lastly, the, the areas in this county where there is a deficit, like you said, there may not be childcare down the street. Do you have like a map that shows where those deficits are?
Right. So that is something I want to come back and share, I can email it later. We're waiting until after the first of the year. The state right now is contacting childcare providers to identify any that are telling us now they don't want to continue to take families that have publicly-funded childcare. Once we have that in hand, we'll be much better able to give you an accurate idea, but we can literally get it down to the zip code.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Okay, thank you. And Moira has now stepped out, but I did want to thank Moira for continuing the partnership with 4C and other providers like yourselves, who are all doing the good work, and you guys are all doing the good work every day.
Yeah, we appreciate it very, very much.
Okay, thanks for coming in. All right. The next item on the agenda is related to the census. We've been talking a lot about the census and the, the nature of the work, the importance of the work for the dollars that flow down to Hamilton County, both for safety net services in addition to the economic development that we're able to do in partnership with the outlying jurisdictions. But we're also talking about jobs and what jobs are available to people in this area. So thank you for being here. Please introduce yourselves and your titles.
Okay, I'm Kathy Buckley, and I'm the lead for Hamilton County for the census. And just wanted to come here today, I know that you've had a lot of background in why the census is important, but just wanted to talk to you a little bit about why it's important in Hamilton County. One of the things that we are, it's a monumental task, as you know, and one of the things that we want to do is make sure that we count all the people that live in Hamilton County where they usually live. So what we need to do is really, really bring in a lot of numbers. We're looking for 5,000 to 10,000 Hamilton County residents to vet to help us with this, help us with enumeration, help us out with office work. We have several operations that we're going to be doing that we need people for. Probably, you know, that we want to count everybody and make sure that we count all people that live in the county for a lot of reasons, for funding reasons, for state representation reasons and, and county representation. You know, we, I mean, a lot of the funding helps with highways, with services. The representation is so important for the county also. Another thing that we are looking at in the census is what are some of the trends? We've seen a 13% increase in population in the U.S. just from the 1990 census to 2000. And as you might guess, most of that population we're seeing in the South and in the West. So those are some trends that are very interesting to marketing groups and to lawmakers and policymakers as yourselves. Some of the other people that we talk to on a, in a frequent basis are businesses, marketing groups, the information is really important to them. So we want to make sure that it's done accurately, and we want to make sure that we have enough people to help us with this huge operation. Probably when we're fully staffed, we're looking at 800 to 1,000 people that will be helping us with this venture. And that's why I said we need about 5,000 to 10,000 because we'll be vetting those people. There's background checks and it's pretty, it's a pretty thorough vetting, and we want to make sure that these are the right people to do the different jobs that we have, office-wise, out in the field, and everywhere that we will be in the county. I wanted to turn this over to Tammy Simendinger, and she's one of our super-recruiters. She's done a great job of recruiting people and getting those people into that funnel and getting them vetted for the jobs that we have. And she has more information about the specific jobs and what they pay, too. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Well, thank you for having us. Appreciate it. I'm Tammy Simendinger. I, as Kathy said, I am a recruiting supervisor here. And, you know, I, this is kind of like preaching to the choir, why the census is important. We know we get funding from it, school districts are drawing from it, there's so much information we get from the census. So we want to make sure that every human being in Hamilton County is counted for. And as Kathy mentioned, we do need a large pool of people to help us with that. The actual number is 7751 people, our applications. We are currently only at 2,500. So Hamilton County is still considered in the red as far as applications to be a census worker. Now, when I say census worker, all you have to do is you, you have to be 18 years of age. So it's great for retirees, veterans get preferential hiring status, it's great for people looking for summer employment, it's great for teachers, childcare workers, parents of kids. There's so many different opportunities for somebody to be a census taker. There's so many different opportunities for somebody to be a census taker. So the best part I haven't even said yet, they are going to pay census takers $23.50 an hour to work a very flexible job so you can make up your own hours. And it's 58 cents per mile, but you're working in your own neighborhood. So, you know, so people that are maybe a little apprehensive about, oh, I don't know about doing this. It's very easy. The census will, the government will provide them with a tablet to do the census on. So let me give you a little bit of a timeline. So we're asking people, if you're interested in this job, apply now. Get in the, the pool. And then January, February, they're going to be looking at people's applications. At February, March, they're going to be calling them and say, okay, we've chosen you. We now need you to go get a background check and fingerprint it because every census worker will have a ID on them. And they will have clear marking that they are a census worker. Then we are going to be hiring a few people on to do the nursing homes, the jails, count the people, what we call quarters. From, after the quarters are counted, then we're going to be counting the homeless, trying to find everyone we can. And then from there, then the census survey will actually be mailed out on a postcard in March, asking people to do the census online. Now, we know. And then follow up again with a paper copy. So those people who have still not filled out their applicant, or the survey, we will send people to their homes. That's what we're calling census taker. April 1st, National Census Day. So I mean, we're talking about this just in Hamilton County, but this is nationwide. Every, and then let me preference that every county will pay a little bit differently. So when I say $23.50, that's just here in Hamilton County. But if they go to the 2020census.gov/jobs, that's, they'll find out how much they can make in their county if they're not in Hamilton County. So we do have some office jobs available. That's in the old Jakita Building down on Walnut Street. But the primary focus is what we're going to be hiring is what we call the census takers. So they'll, once they've done all their background checks, training will probably be March, April-ish. And then April, May is when they'll really start getting busy. Everything has to be wrapped up by August 1st. So that's when the information has to get compiled and it gets sent to the president's office. So like I said, real quick synopsis, you get $23.50 an hour. You make up your own hours. They're looking for people who do work 10 to 40 hours a week. So if you know anybody that is, you know, looking for a summer job, looking to make additional money, to get caught up on bills or, you know, it's such a great opportunity for high school seniors, people going away to college. This also goes on their resume, which can also get them into the government systems for jobs later on in life. So obviously, we are trying to get the message out twofold about why it's so important that everybody completes their survey because we want everybody to be counted. But then we also want to tell them about this opportunity that there are good jobs available for a short time. It only happens every 10 years, right? So get it while you can. So what we're asking for the commissioners is, we need your help getting the message out. Obviously, you know, there's a lot of opportunities that we don't know about. So if we can leave literature maybe in the government buildings so people can see. If you have a messaging system through the county channels that we can get out to everyone, like a website, newsletter, something. You know, we thought about the signs at the courthouse, the Jobs and Family Services Building, even the jail, people visiting. We're looking at high-traffic places where we can maybe set up a table for a little bit just to let people know, it's coming. These jobs are available. Here's an opportunity for you. I think I've touched on most of this, but, you know, if you guys have any ideas, suggestions for us, like events coming up, opportunities that we can have a speaker at, you know, I would welcome your input. You guys both have my email so you can, you know, follow up with me later if you think of something, oh yeah, we can do this. I would really welcome that. But at this time, do you have any questions?
Thank you. Thank you both for being here. And I, I think I speak for both of us to say, anywhere, anytime, you want to set up a table or interact with people, interacting with the county, feel free, as long as you're not impeding progress or egress, you know. I think we want to be a partner, a legit partner in this. I have a couple of questions for you. So when you talk about, you know, the, the survey goes out, people hopefully respond, how many people, what percentage don't respond?
In the past, it's been about one-third.
Wow, okay, so a third don't respond to the survey. And then I, what was our percentage last time? It was like 78 or something like that of participation? The city, or ours was closer to 70 or 72. The city's was higher. We're partnering with the city, obviously. I think theirs was 78. I think ours was like 70 or 72% of folks were counted, which is super low. So I wonder, you know, what your goal is going into this next cycle of the census?
Our goal is 100%.
That's a good answer. For the record, she said 100%.
Preparing for this, you know, because we don't want it to be 70%, we want it to be 78%. We want it to be 100%. So there's a lot more operations. And as Tammy said, people can answer it online. There's also a telephone number where they can do their survey. And then the paper survey is our last resort, you know, or, and then going to the houses, of course, is our last resort. But we're, we've been.
Can you come up? You need to come up to the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're not picking yet.
We've been pretty vigilant about, about finding where people live. So that's one of the things that we did. That was an early operation. So we took maps and we went and verified A addresses, which is something that, you know, is really a thorough way to find out where people actually live. Our homeless count is, you know, we have better processes for that. Our group quarters, we're counting people where they are usually and making sure that we're not duplicating and that we're trying to get everyone we can. We have a lot more operations in the 2020 census than we had in the 2000 census. And that's all about improving and analyzing what happened before. So, yeah, we're 100% is our goal. To count everybody where they are most of the time and every single person. And so, you know, and we do want to count all people, not just citizens. You know, they can be, just all people, all human beings have to be counted for this to work.
And we have been plugging, and we'll do it again today, plugging the website so the people who want to work can.
That'd be great.
Apply. So tell us again what it is, the website. 2020census.gov?
Yeah, 2020census.gov/jobs. And might add, one of the things that they're looking at is, when somebody applies for a census job, they'll look at their ZIP code. And then that's the neighborhood they'll be in. So hopefully, those people know their neighborhood and they know where people live. So that's why we want to get, you know, 4,000 people in Hamilton County to apply and work because we want to knock on every door that needs to. No stone left unturned.
Right. Commissioner Summer Odum?
Thank you, Madam President. I know we, 10 years ago when we did it, the questions that were used then, I'm not saying revise them, but was there a review of the questions or how they were asked? Are they the same questions as 10 years ago? Because I know there was some paranoia in the field about, okay, they're asking, how many people live in your house? And are they going to try to take some of my benefits? Those kind of things. So I'm not saying changing the questions, but were the, were the questions reviewed at all? How they were written?
Well, and that's a national thing that the questions are done. The census has, it's been on track to do certain things. So when a question wanted to be added, it would have delayed the system or the whole process, so it was not added. Everything that is asked is totally confidential. Our people that do the census takers, they are people that have to swear and they know that if they share any information. I did the address canvassing. I could not show a homeowner what address I even had for them. Otherwise, you know, there's a penalty and jail time.
So my question is, 10 years ago, are they the same questions that were asked, that are asked now?
We have not seen the survey.
Okay.
To my knowledge, but to my knowledge, it, they haven't changed much.
Okay.
If any.
And the other thing I think we, people need to know that are watching, that are interested in working with the census, I learned this from you, that if you don't get the number of people you need to be census takers, they will bring people out of state or out of another county to work here. And we want the people that work and do this to be committed to this process. So I'm not saying that they're not going to be committed. But if you live here and work here and the money comes to you and your family, I think you'll be a little more committed. So I know everybody has to do what they need to do to get the numbers, but they will come from everywhere if we don't fill the gap, so.
That's correct. Because I did go out east in Scioto County and was helping that county because they could not get enough workers out there. So anybody can work 10 to 40 hours a week. So even if you already have a full-time job and you want to make a little additional money, this is a great opportunity.
Thank you.
The weather will be nice, right? The weather will be nice.
Nice summer time to get out, yes.
I don't know if you've been out today, but it's kind of cold. So, yeah, so give us that timeframe one more time for the canvassing. So that starts around, did you say April or May?
Well, yeah, people should apply now. They'll get contacted January, February, then they'll get training. And so more likely, they'll be called, they'll start working August, I'm sorry, April, May. And be wrapped up totally by August 1st.
Through August, yeah. Okay, great, 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 great. Well, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We will continue to hold up your piece of literature. And feel free, of course, to leave some. And if you want to leave a stack, we'll make sure that they get over to some of the other county buildings and have them at the, in the reception or we'll put them on the bulletin boards and stuff. So it's, like you said, it's a great opportunity for folks. So thank you so much for being here and helping us out. Before we go any further, I'm going to move that we excuse Commissioner Portun from our meeting.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you all. Thank you for being here. We have a couple executive sessions that we need to move into unless there's anything further.
I have nothing else.
All right, I'm going to move that we go into executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G4 regarding collective bargaining. And then executive session number two pursuant to RC Section 121.22G3 to conduct a conference with an attorney concerning. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.